Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, May 18th, 2005. City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., or as close to it as we can achieve a quorum. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the council unable to -- excuse me, for members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grulhan, Labange, Ledlo, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Viercoso, Weiss, Lain, Padilla, ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. Colleagues, we have a bare quorum present at this time and a couple of members requesting to leave early. So let's stay focused. Our agenda isn't too long this morning. First item, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Labange moves. Ms. Perry seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Smith moves and Mr. Cardenas seconds.
Mr. President, on the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearings. Item one is a building and safety confirmation of assessment and the department has advised that that matter may be received and filed in as much as the assessment has been paid.
Okay. Members, any objection to receiving and filing item number one? Seeing none, so ordered. Next item, please.
Item number two is also a public hearing item and the applicant consents to a continuance to May 31st.
Members, any objection to continuing item number two? Seeing none, that's continued. Next item?
Item number three is a finding of public convenience or necessity in Council District Nine and I believe a motion is required to deny the application.
Ms. Perry moves to deny. If there's no further discussion, let's open the roll on that motion. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That motion is approved. Next item?
Next items before council are four through 22 and, Mr. President, on item number 15, that matter should be continued till Friday. There was the wrong recommendations on the agenda and the city attorney did advise that that matter should be continued to put the correct item on the agenda.
Members, any objection to continuing item 15? Seeing none, so ordered. Leaving items four through 22 before us. Members, public hearings have been held on these items. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Any requests for specials, four through 22? Seeing none, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Items four and five are ordinances and do carry over for a second reading. Next item?
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 23 through 45. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, items 23 through 45 are before the city council today and colleagues that do not have requests for members of the public to address the council on these items, public hearings are open and closed. Requests for specials, Mr. Smith?
Number 29 be postponed for two weeks, continue for two weeks.
An objection to continuing item 29 for two weeks. That will bring us to June 1st. Seeing none, item 29 is continued. Any other continuances, colleagues, or specials on 23 through 45? Seeing none, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Items 23 through 28 are ordinances and also carry over for a second reading. Next items, please.
And do you wish to go back to public comment at this time?
Yes. If that's the end of the consent agenda, then let's return to general public comment. It's an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. And we have our delegation from the South Central Farmers. If you would all come forward, please, as I read your names into the record. Cristobal Bravo...
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, May 18th, 2005. City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., or as close to it as we can achieve a quorum. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the council unable to—excuse me—for members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Gruel, Han, Labange, Ledlo, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Villarigosa, Weiss, Lain, Padilla, ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. Colleagues, we have a bare quorum present at this time and a couple of members requesting to leave early. So let's stay focused. Our agenda isn't too long this morning. First item, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Labange moves. Ms. Perry seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Smith moves. And Mr. Cardenas seconds.
Mr. President, on the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearings. Item one is a building and safety confirmation of assessment, and the department has advised that that matter may be received and filed in as much as the assessment has been paid.
Okay. Members, any objection to receiving and filing item number one? Seeing none, so ordered. Next item, please.
Item number two is also a public hearing item, and the applicant consents to a continuance to May 31st.
Okay. Members, any objection to continuing item number two? Seeing none? That's continued. Next item?
Item number three is a finding of public convenience or necessity in Council District Nine, and I believe a motion is required to deny the application.
Ms. Perry moves to deny. If there's no further discussion, let's open the roll on that motion. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That motion is approved. Next item?
Next items before council are four through 22. And, Mr. President, on item number 15, that matter should be continued till Friday. There was the wrong recommendations on the agenda, and the city attorney did advise that that matter should be continued to put the correct item on the agenda.
Okay. Members, any objection to continuing item 15? Seeing none, so ordered. Leaving items four through 22 before us. Members, public hearings have been held on these items. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Any requests for specials, four through 22? Seeing none? Let's open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Items four and five are ordinances and do carry over for a second reading. Next item?
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items 23 through 45. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objection. Items 23 through 45 are before the City Council today. And colleagues, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and closed. Request for specials? Mr. Smith?
Is number 29 be postponed for two weeks? Continued for two weeks?
An objection to continuing item 29 for two weeks? That will bring us to June 1st. Seeing none? Item 29 is continued. Any other continuances, colleagues, or specials on 23 through 45? Seeing none? Let's open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Items 23 through 28 are ordinances and also carry over for a second reading. Next items, please.
And do you wish to go back to public comment at this time?
Yes. If that's the end of the consent agenda, then let's return to general public comment. An opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. And we have our delegation from the South Central Farmers. If you would all come forward, please, as I read your names into the record. Cristobal Bravo, Hector Manuel Ramirez, Elsa Avina, Donitilo Palestino, Anastasia Martinez, Bonifacio Reyes, Rosa Cortez, José Cortez, Marta López, Manuel Aguilar, and many other speaker cards that we'll add to the record.
Buenos dias, señores del Consilio.
Good morning, council members.
Hoy estoy aquí muy contento.
Today, I'm very happy here.
Para felicitarnos a todos porque todos vivimos en esta ciudad.
To congratulate everybody because everybody lives here in the city.
Por la gran oportunidad que se nos está dando a alguien de nuestra raza para probar su capacidad.
For someone that lives in our community, someone that's of our race, that could prove their capabilities.
Cosa que ya lo he hecho antes, pero ahora va a ir a un nivel mayor.
Things that he's done before, but now it's going to go to a higher level.
Y eso ha mostrado que la gente quiere cambios y quiere cosas buenas para toda esta ciudad.
And that proves that people want changes and better things for this life and this society.
Así nosotros queremos cosas buenas y queremos que la unidad de parte de ustedes apoyarnos, a mantener nuestro jardín en la 41 de Alameda, sea efectiva y productiva.
That's why we want you guys to support us and help us produce in our South Central on the 41st in Alameda. Our friend?
Porque con el apoyo, si ustedes nos brindan el suyo, creo que todo es posible. Porque yo hago este pedido a cualquier gente, pequeño o grande, a nivel político o a nivel social, normal, que tenga el poder para ayudarnos, que nos ayude a preservar ese jardín para todos.
Because with your support, your help, it could be politicians, big and small, ask for your support with your help on our garden.
Y el ejemplo que lo necesitamos nosotros son todos mis compañeros que me acompañan aquí este día, para que ustedes vean la necesidad que tenemos nosotros de su apoyo y de todo lo que nuestra gente necesita.
And along with my fellow people behind me, and your support, it shows, it proves how much we need you and how much you need us. Your support.
Porque nosotros somos una comunidad así como ustedes en su familia, con hijos, con gente adulta, y sobre todo tenemos mucha gente mayor, que realmente no queremos ver nosotros vagando como tanta gente aquí en la calle, en el centro de Los Ángeles, sin tener nada que hacer y simplemente viviendo en banquetas.
Because like us, we're very hard productive people. We don't want to be loafing around, living off the streets or curbs, bumming around. We want to be productive, giving fruit to our children and families and grandparents.
Es por eso nuestra gran lucha, y la mía, de preservar ese lugar donde yo he visto que esta gente, a la edad que ellos tienen, ya muchos en la edad avanzada, se sienten orgullosos y son gente digna y productiva, no ociosa y sin hacer nada, nomás muriendo ahí en un asilo.
That's why there's a lot of elder people in the streets, living and dying in the streets. We don't want that in asylums. We want dignified people helping us working together.
Y quiero que me ayuden a preservar ese lugar junto con todos aquí en la comunidad, porque yo quiero ver a nuestros niños escribiendo cosas buenas en una libreta o rayando surcos en el suelo para producir algo y no solamente pintando las paredes por ahí, que eso no deja nada.
That's why I want my kids to be writing in tablets, not writing in the streets or sidewalks or graffiti, doing productive stuff, what they've done in their lives, talking about what they've done in gardens.
Y esa es mi petición. Ustedes ya saben, yo he estado aquí en otras ocasiones anteriores, y pues me gustaría que poder ver una, ya una cosa decisiva de parte de ustedes en apoyo nuestro, a preservar este lugar que es bueno para todos.
That's my petition. See a positive, productive support from you guys, so we could keep, maintain this garden for us.
Muchas gracias y pues de nuevo felicitarnos a todos por la gran elección y la oportunidad que se nos da de poder ser útiles a cualquier nivel.
Thank you very much. I want to thank you guys for the support at a higher level and all the backing, and thank you very much.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Josefina Medina. Buenos dias a todos los señores del Consilio.
Good morning. My name is Jose.
Josefina.
Josefina Medina.
Y voy a tomarme la libertad de darle las felicitaciones al señor Villarigosa. Congratulation, Mr. Villarigosa. Creo que nuestra ciudad de Los Ángeles está creciendo a nivel político.
I want to congratulate Mr. Villarigosa, and I believe our city is growing at a very large political state.
La razón que me lleva a decir esto es porque somos ciudadanos que pensamos en el cambio, y estas elecciones lo ha demostrado.
The reason why I say this, because we're citizens and we think about the change, and this has helped us with the change.
Nuestro punto más principal nosotros, los campesinos de Sur Centro, es preservar nuestro espacio verde para nuestros abuelos, nuestros hijos, y nosotros mismos.
Our main focus, our main point is preserve our greenlands, our farmlands, for our grandparents, our children, our great-grandchildren.
Regresando al punto que me decidió, digamos, dar mi voto al señor Villarigosa porque cree la educación. Con educación vamos a poder ser más grandes en esta ciudad. Yo me lleno de orgullo en decirle, soy campesina, pero tengo dos hijos en la universidad.
The reason why I voted for Mr. Villarigosa, because he believes in education, and education's very important. I'm a farmer. I have two daughters, and they're in university, and I put them through it.
Señores, necesitamos el apoyo en nuestro jardín porque nuestros hijos crecen sanos demente y sanos físicamente porque pueden llevarse a la boca vegetales limpios de contaminación.
Gentlemen, we need our gardens because our children grow healthy fruits and plants because that healthy fruit and plants, they could feed it to themselves and it's free from insecticides.
Otra cosa bien importante que dijo mi compañero, y quiero recalcar. Me gustaría de que algunos de ustedes han ido, pero otros no. Dese la oportunidad de ver personas de 80 años siendo productivas en lugar de estar acostados en las camas de los asilos.
There's something that I want to reiterate that my coworker told me. Go to the South Central and see the people 80 years old working and not in hospitals or asylums.
Señores, otra vez a lo mismo. Ustedes pueden ayudarnos a conservar nuestro jardín, 41 y Alameda, que ahí se respira paz y tranquilidad, y nuestros hijos pueden correr sin tener miedo que se los va a atropellar un carro o los pandilleros que andan por ahí corrompiendo a los demás.
Gentlemen, come to 41st in Alameda because our children there could run freely without gang bangers or being afraid that they might get run over by cars or anything like that. They're in peace, freely running.
Otra cosa, denle la oportunidad a la ciudad de Los Ángeles tener una célula más produciendo aire limpio.
Another thing, give Los Angeles another area to be producing greenery for Los Angeles.
Gracias por su tiempo.
Gracias.
Thank you for your time.
Le quiero dar las gracias al grupo también. Tenemos más personas queriendo hablar en este segmento de nuestra agenda. Último comentario, por favor.
Buenos dias.
Good morning.
Sí, pues yo de la manera más atenta le pedía, por favor, que si nos ayuda para el jardín, porque allí pues para nuestros nietos sembrar y los vegetales para que ellos coman sanamente, y nosotros ya la mente pues nos vamos allá a trabajar como personas ya mayores que semos.
Good morning. I just wanted to say, please let our children, our nephews, plant our foods and our vegetables because it's healthy and we could produce healthy food and fruits for our families.
Pues yo le pido eso nada más, por favor. Gracias.
I just beg you this, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Gracias. I want to call up Melrose Larry Green now on your general public comment.
Good morning. Buenos dias, yo hablo español también, but I'm going to speak in English. First of all, I echo the previous speaker's comments. I also congratulate Antonio Villarigosa on his great victory yesterday. But the problems of the city of L.A., like I said, after President Bush won in November, the problems require cooperation from everybody. And it's so great to see my new friend, Richard Alatorre, here, the godfather of L.A. politics right here. It was a wonderful, wonderful day for everybody. Mike Hernandez, and I want you all to know that you're going to see a lot more of Melrose Larry Green every four. I'm not looking for a job. If—that's not why I'm there. I'm just an enthusiastic volunteer. I want to be friends with Tom Labange, my councilman, Eric Garcetti, also my councilman, not exactly, but on Hollywood Boulevard. Tonight, we're going to have 13,000 people, thanks to Eric Garcetti, as Audio Slave is playing with Jimmy Kimmel tonight, The Jimmy Kimmel Show. And I'm going to give you some breaking news. I'm working hard on getting Antonio on The Jimmy Kimmel Show, and you're all going to come backstage. And secondly, I have regards to everybody in the City Council from the great comedian Jackie Mason. Jackie Mason, this is news all over the country. It's in The New York Times, The New York Post, and Jackie Mason says congratulations to Antonio. And this is a quote from Jackie Mason, that if he had any understanding whatsoever, he'd give this guy a job as an ombudsman if he had any decency whatsoever. This is what Jackie Mason told me to tell you. So I want to tell you, this is a very, 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 very happy guy we're looking at right now. I don't know how you guys got elected. I've lost a lot of elections. People say mean things in campaigns. Jim Hahn's a great guy. He was a great mayor. And I want you to know that Jim Hahn has my congratulations for a great four years and a great staff. I guess I'm running out of time. There's other speakers. Congratulations, Cindy, on your great service. And I look forward to seeing all of you. Most of all, congratulations to Antonio Villarigosa, the new mayor of L.A. as of July 1st, and everybody that supported him. Thank you very much. I got to go back to my life, but I'll see you soon. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. This concludes general public comment for today's meeting. Colleagues, at this time, I'd like to recognize councilmember Zine for her presentation.
It's my pleasure to introduce a unique group of students and leaders in the West San Fernando Valley, West Valley Leadership Academy. In the May edition of People Magazine, they talk about the runaway bride. And then, on page 123, they talk about a one-room school, a tough teacher makes miracles. And we're here this morning to acknowledge and show our appreciation for West Valley Leadership Academy and the people of West Valley Leadership Academy who made that happen, Paul White, who's the founder, and Lou Tobon, the principal, and the students. It's a unique school. Recently, we honored El Camino for the decathlon, and we honor a number of schools in the city of Los Angeles for achievement, and this is a very unique school that takes teens who are not on the right track, for whatever reason, and brings them back on the right track. And the students you see standing behind me are attending West Valley Leadership Academy, which is in my district in Canoga Park. The school was founded in January 2000 by Mr. Paul White. Community day school, alternative high school, adopted and operated, I should say, by the Los Angeles County Office of Education. It serves students in grades nine to 12. It is a growing record of success in helping students catch up on credits, graduate, get employed, reunite with their families, get out of gangs, get out of drugs, and go on a constructive life and higher education. We hear about the dropout rate in high school. Nearly 80% of the students graduate, which is nearly one-third higher than mainstream public schools in Los Angeles. Let me say that again. Nearly 80% of the students graduate, which is phenomenal success for the West Valley Leadership Academy. Academy has grown and now has a waiting list of applicants, most referred by teachers and probation officers. The lessons taught cover algebra and English, as well as lectures on integrity and how to perform in a job interview. West Valley Leadership Academy requires parents to attend a teacher conference every month, and we spoke about that just recently, where the parents need to get involved with their students at our schools. Students are required to hold jobs or do community service and take college or vocational courses in order to keep off the streets and out of trouble. Students are also required to be interviewed with their parents and agree to abide by the rules of Paul White in order to attend the school. Paul White's emphasis, he says, is to get kids to care about somebody besides themselves. Paul has done a remarkable job and is highly commended for making sure that no student gets left behind. I met Paul a couple of years ago, and it was all over a tragedy where a student was unfortunately shot and killed. I attended the services at Our Lady of the Valley Catholic Church in the valley. Paul is married to another teacher, and he took it upon himself to bring about a school that would take students and get them back on the right track. And I oftentimes, when I'll visit a newborn at a hospital and see that sweet, innocent child, I wonder how that sweet, innocent child ends up getting involved in gangs and drugs and violence. Well, unfortunately, in the case of Mike Ugweedy, he suffered death and died basically in Paul's arms, and Paul made a commitment to make a difference and make a change and bring about change for students and give them on the right track. And everyone you see again behind me is a student at West Valley Leadership Academy. We're going to have Paul speak, and then the principal speak, and then maybe we'll have some students. This is basically a field trip, I guess, we should say, today. They've never been to City Hall. Paul's never been to City Hall. But the courage that the students have to pursue the education and the leadership that's been brought about by the school is to be acknowledged by the Los Angeles City Council. So Paul, we're going to have you speak first, and then Lou. The microphone is all yours. Congratulations. Let's hear it again for the West Valley Leadership Academy, Paul White.
Thank you for having us this morning. I just can't think of a city anywhere with more wonderful potential than the City of Angels that we all love so much. And of course, one way—if we're ever going to realize that potential—is, we know we've got to do better things with our children. And we're so grateful to be recognized here, and I'm so thankful for the accomplishments the children have made. The things we do at West Valley, not too spectacular, really. Somebody said one time, excellence consists of doing ordinary things extraordinarily well. And what we try to do is, you show up on time, just like you'll have to do in life. You have to get along, different temperaments, different races, different cultures. You have to figure it out. That's America's strength, not a weakness. You have to give your best. If you give your best, usually good things happen. You have to stay off of drugs and alcohol. Our kids all test clean voluntarily. You have to get experience at the school level with jobs, which help plan your career. You don't wait till you're out of high school to start thinking about what kind of adult life you're going to have. And the parents have to be involved. And our parents, 100% of our parents, come every month to stay abreast of what their children are doing and to support our efforts. And so with this kind of program, and this is something that could be done everywhere in Los Angeles, indeed everywhere in the country, and we find that just doing these simple things, and most of all, the biggest thing we do, really, we love them, just like they were our children. we do, really, we love them, just like they were our own. So if they're doing something poorly, we stay on them like they were our own. If they're doing something well, we support them and reward it, just like they were our own. And it's just, we invite you all to come here anytime. There's just no place like it. We thank you so much for having us down here. Mr. Zine, doing an outstanding job out there in the valley and giving us a context and environment where a school like this can develop. So we really appreciate your appreciation of our place. Our principal would have a couple of words, and then we'll let you see a couple of our outstanding students. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, for having us today. This is a special day for me. At 29 years old, I've had some experiences, but this is very special for me and for our county office of education. I have nothing more to add than Paul's eloquent words, except I'm so proud of you guys behind me. It's amazing where you've come from, but where you are now is even more amazing. If you look at Paul's T-shirt and the Way Out, when I walk into my school over there, I always think of this. We're going to do miracles, and we're going to do them one at a time. Thank you very much. Don't be shy. It's only a microphone with all of Los Angeles watching you.
My name's Ashley Hadamio. I am 15 years old, and upon attending West Valley, I now have a job, which I never had. I attend college, and I drug test clean. Before coming to West Valley, I used to do drugs. I didn't attend school regularly. And coming here really changed me.
Hi, my name is Reggie Johnson, and I am soon to be a senior at West Valley Leadership Academy. I'm 17 years old. Before I came here, I was getting in trouble a lot and fighting at school, at my other school. But now, I'm about to graduate in September, probably. And being in this school is giving me more plans of what I want to do with my future. Like, when I get off high school, when I'm done with high school, I plan on going to a college to play football, a community college, play football for two years, and then try to go to a big Maine college. And, yeah.
All right, Tom, you're up. Come on. Tom will be our final speaker.
Hi, my name's Antonio Reyes, and I'm 17, or going to be 17 soon. And in the past, I've been involved with graffiti gangs, drugs, and ever since I came to this school, it's been pretty much completely different. I have no, nothing to do with any of it no more. Drug test clean, just everything's a whole lot better. If I stayed at a regular high school, I'd probably be graduating in like 2007. At the school that I'm at now, which is West Valley, I'll be graduating in November, December this year. And I plan to go to college, which I never actually had in mind. So it's a big difference.
So there you have it, West Valley Leadership Academy, the wonderful leadership, the wonderful students. Our future is there. And it's interesting that our mayor-elect, Antonio Villarosa, dropped out of high school. And you see what happened when he turned his life around. Continued education, became the Speaker of the California State Assembly, a council member here, and now, July 1st, the mayor of the city of Los Angeles. So changes can be made in someone's lives. Paul, again, appreciate your leadership, your friendship. Lou, also with you, and all of the wonderful students. Canoga Park has turned around, as we all know. Main Street, Canoga Park, that area has all turned around, and you've been a part of the positive turnaround. So congratulations to you all. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues.
We're going to go back for pictures. Just going back for pictures. Thank you, Mr. Zine. Colleagues, I believe we've dispensed with the agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any housekeeping?
Yes, council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
And there is an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused Friday, June 3rd, to arrive at 10:30 for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Reyes is excused.
And that clears the desk.
Ms. Perry.
I wanted to request that 30 go forthwith.
Forthwith on item 30 from today's agenda. Mr. Garcetti.
Yes, Councilmember Parks asked if we could reconsider item number 12 and continue to that until Friday. He can't be here today, and he wants to ask Housing some questions about the U R P contracts, if that's okay to wait until Friday, and if there should be no interruption of services.
That's item 12 from today's agenda?
Yes.
So then, let's open the roll on reconsideration of item number 12. Let's close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, that item is reconsidered and continued without objection. Ms. Miskowski.
We have item 22. Go forthwith.
Forthwith on item 22. Any announcements today, colleagues? Other than just want to congratulate our colleague, Antonio Villarosa, on his election last night by a significant margin to become the next mayor of our great city. He's still with us around the horse street through the end of June. He's not gone yet, has some work to do, but come July 1st, he'll become the next mayor, and our city continues to move on. Other announcements? Do we have adjourned motions today? Do we have adjourned motions today? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Brule, LeBange, Miskowski, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Zine, Fadia.
Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.